I'd like to call the order, the September 17th, 2020 Business Meeting. And ask the County Administrator Gary Schmidt to please take the role.
Yes Chair, first our staff support today Christina Twilliger Clerk to the Board, Stephen Madcor County Council, Rich Marvin Garrett Teague Public and Government Affairs. Role call Chair Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Thank you. Got it, thank you.
Yes Ken is joining us by phone, he's out delivering food boxes, so. With that, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, we are holding this meeting virtually. If you're joining us on a Zoom app for this morning's meeting and you are interested in providing public comment, we'll prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. You will have the option of providing your comments to us live. Alternatively, anyone can send in a comment to be read during the public communication portion of our meeting over email. Just send it in at any time during the meeting by email at bcc@clackamas.us. That's bcc@clackamas.us. Be sure to include your name and area where you live. And with that, Gary, what's on the agenda today?
Yes Chair, we'll start with wildfire update. We have Nancy Bush Director of Disaster Management and Incident Commander for our Wildfire Emergency Operations Center. Nancy, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you and good morning everyone. First, I just want to say thank you to all of our partners that we have here in the region, as well as throughout the state and even in some other states and are providing us with some resources to fight all the fires that we have. I also want to just say thank you too for all of our residents who have been working with us too and making sure that you're following our orders as well as our alerts. We are just very gracious and thankful that you've been able to do that, which has been, of course, our priority is to make sure we can minimize loss of life and we can only do that with you. So some updates we have here on the fires. I'll start with the Doughty Fire, which is north of Estacada. Overnight, they did not see much growth there. They still obviously do have firefighters there and working that particular fire. That one is under our local control here with Clackamas Fire and resources that they have been able to bring in. And they do know there's a lot of dangerous trees in that area. So we want to make sure everyone knows that, but as we move forward, we'll be working with those. The Graves' Fire, which is one of our smallest fires, is now on patrol status. So they're just watching it to make sure that nothing happens there. The Unger and Willholt Fire are still 100% lined and they're doing the mop up of 250 feet, which means that they're going 250 feet into the fire to make sure that there are no hotspots. So that's what's going on with both of those fires. Our Fire Marshal's Office, the Oregon Fire Marshal, is going to be demobilizing around 5 o'clock today and will be going, of course, to assist on other fires. We want to thank them for all of their help and everything that they've done to give relief to our local firefighters and also to, of course, assist with those fires I just mentioned. Riverside now is at 135,974 acres. Overnight, and the new numbers I got this morning, it is now 6% contained. And again, that is mostly on the west side and from what I understand, down toward the Beechy Fire and in that area. We have 538 firefighters also on Riverside at this time. We have, there are some weather concerns. If you have not been watching your weather, please do so. But we're looking at some flood, flush, fled, I'm so sorry, flash flooding in the area, in the burnt area, which can cause problems, even landslides, because of course, all of that soil, the trees, things are very unstable there. So we want everyone to be very vigilant for those areas that have reopened, that there might be some issues. We also, of course, anyone that's going inside of the fire envelope will be getting that information. But it could close some roads. And depending on how bad it is, we're working with the National Weather Service to kind of get some, as specific information as we can, and if there's certain areas in our county that we need to be more concerned about. And we're going to be getting that information as soon as we get the National Weather Service to give us some, help us with some messaging and making sure that that gets out to our communities. But we are looking at thunderstorms this evening. That is basically my update for today. Just also, just one more thing, we are working on our damage assessment. We know that there's a lot of ash out there in certain areas. So we're getting that done as quickly as we can. We have to turn everything into Oregon Emergency Management. We are working with contractors, getting people brought in. But I just want everyone to know, we do realize that there's a lot going on. There's a lot of tree issues, there's a lot of ash. And we're working through the FEMA system as well as the state system to get things moving as quickly as possible. And that is all I have, if you have questions.
We do, I want to ask you something first off, when you say the Fire Marshal's leaving, those fire crews don't leave, just the Fire Marshal?
No, the Fire Marshal's crew, so there's, yeah, so that's a very good question. So we have Fire Marshal that was here and they had the crews that were working on Unger, Willholt and Graves. So now that those are being mopped up, they will be leaving. But that, but we have two federal teams that are here, one is on Beechy and one is on Riverside. Those fire crews are here and they're staying. And it could be probably weeks, from what I'm understanding, of course, depending on weather and all of those things. But, so we have some firefighters leaving because they are mopping up for those fires.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Sonya and then Paul.
So Nancy, I'm curious about air quality. I appreciate the report, the weather report that you, I think you emailed it to, it's either last night or this morning, I read it this morning, that anticipated that with the rain, that air quality will improve. Didn't say how much it would improve, but I'm just curious if you have any more information about that.
No, I don't, it's hard to gauge some of that because it depends on the winds. And there are so many fires on the west coast that even if, hopefully yes, it's going to help clear out, you know, and improve our air quality. But we also will have other smoke that could come in from other fires and it's just hard to predict. But we are expecting it to improve.
And my next question is, I have, our evacuation areas have been reduced substantially, but we still have pretty large geographical area where there is still the evacuation three area. What is it like now in our evacuation areas? Are they clearing out? I understand that Clackamas Town Center is going to be dis- demobilized tomorrow. What's happening at the Elks, at Gladstone?
Yeah, so yes, the, we are going to be, the Clackamas Town Center will be demobilized tomorrow. We have, for those who have not been able to go back into their home, we're either getting them into hotels or they are getting moved to another RV park. There's, I believe we're working with Gladstone primarily to do that because we think we have enough room to do that there. And we have a partnership with them, as well as we have some partnerships with Milwaukee and some others. Last night, after we opened up and sent out the notifications of the map shrinking again, we found that we could actually close the convention center. So we worked with Metro to do that and we're able to get those individuals that were there into hotels. We've worked with the Red Cross, who's been, you know, really good to help us and working on that. So we've also got that one closed down. So yes, you'll see those shrinking, but every time we do shrink something like that, we always pre-plan. It's like, where are we going to take those that cannot go back and where will they go? So we keep, we're always at least one step ahead.
Oh, thank you so much. When I was out at Clackamas Town Center and talking with folks, there were people in tents there on the site. And I'm just wondering, given that the air quality is so bad, does everybody who wants to be in an inside space have that option?
Yes, that's a great question and yes, I mean, and we have our social services teams and our mental health teams, go teams, that have been going out and, you know, making sure we're getting to the populations and letting them know that we do have smoke shelters. And of course, as you know, some are taking us up on that and some are saying no, thank you. But we are getting that word out and making sure everyone knows that they're available to them.
Yeah, I really appreciated the, and I'll be done now, right after this Jim, I know we got to move along, but I really appreciated the information out there at Clackamas Town Center and that KN95 masks were provided for those who wanted them and people felt very supported that were, had been evacuated. It was really amazing, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, appreciate all the extra hard work you're doing Nancy and your crews and everyone. So just major, major appreciation for everyone's efforts. I did want to just say that this morning I had a chance to talk with ODOT and I know they're going to be doing an assessment primarily focused on 224 and some of the state roads. I talked to our staff on our county roads, so hopefully we're getting some progress on that. I have concerns, of course, as you touched on, I just want to put more emphasis on that is that with loosening of the soils because of the fire and the trees and the debris that our bridges and roads and drainage is in, is likely going to see some impacts and that could cause some severe problems. So the other part about that is that the root base for a lot of these trees is, that are still standing is, it's been pretty marginalized and I think people need to be aware that what looks like a tree that's standing could be a tree that could fall, especially when the winds kick up tonight. So I would just advise anyone to stay out of harm's way. If there's a tree nearby in a burned area, it's got a high propensity to fall. So I would be, just want to, I just want to, want to see any more casualties out there. The other thing I wanted to point out is that DEQ, I had a chance to have a conversation. They have concerns this morning and I don't know, I'm sure to be going public here today that we don't know that in these burned homes and so forth, what the impacts are as far as any toxicity with asbestos or any other chemicals. So anyone is filtering through their burned out premises to at least wear gloves and a face mask and be cautious that if it's an older one, there might be some toxicity related to that. So I don't want to have any, especially with young children or people with respiratory problems, that they don't want to put themselves in any more harm. And that's just basically a message out to the folks. I don't have any specific questions for you Nancy, but I just wanted to point out that that those are concerns that we've got to look for, especially the ones with the rains and the drainage. That just, again, our bridges that we have out there are in jeopardy of just being washed out and that's a concern.
Yeah, thank you Commissioner, and we are getting that information out and trying to hit that really hard today. That's what a lot of our information going out is going to be about today. And back to the trees, whenever you're talking about that shallow root system now with the burn, actually the firefighters call those widowmakers because you just, they look like they could be stable and they just aren't. And also you can go to clackamas.us/wildfires to get information about when you're coming into your home after, even, you know, if it's not burned, but you could have ash. And there's other things that you need to be aware of and you can go there to get some more tips on how to re-enter your home. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I had, I had one other comment, gosh darn it, what was it? Oh, is there, do we have a, is there any other unmet needs out there for people that have been displaced? Or any needs whatsoever for the victims of this fire? I just want to make sure that, you know, if we can help connect dots and get some resources to people. But is there any, anything where we have a shortfall?
So at this time, we are working very hard to make sure that there is, you know, very, the smallest gap that we can have, I'm not saying there's no gap. We are bringing in resources from the state and federal government to help us with that too. They're called resource centers. And when, we're working with fire and law too to see when we can get those set up more in the areas because there's still a level two around like Moala, you know, Colton, or Colton's actually, some of it's still under three. And when we could get those resources in. But we, right now, I don't know of any glaring gaps because it's not been reported to me and I check on that daily, but we are bringing more resources in.
Yeah, I do know that, you know, from talking to some friends and constituents out there that there's just been a lot of community help that have been filling in a lot of those gaps. And I just, I'm just so grateful for everyone that's actually, the community coming together, everyone pulling together, our emergency responders, everyone on behalf of the victim. So I'm just, just pleased that there is just so much support out there. And if we could be apprised of any urgent needs, we all have connections and we're happy to fill gaps.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, every incorporated city has been involved in some way in assisting, as well as a lot of our communities and unincorporated Clackamas, so we could not have done it without them.
Thank you.
Before I go to Sonya, Ken cannot raise his hand, did you want to add anything Ken? I guess not, Sonya?
Yeah, Nancy, just a question, an alert went out regarding water quality and boiling water. Could you clarify the status of the water and if there are any anticipated future water challenges based on the wildfires?
Sure, so yes, our Clackamas River Water Providers have sent information out because there's been some confusion about the water, where there may be boil water orders, where there aren't, et cetera. Right now, Clackamas River Water Providers, which is most of our metropolitan area, it is safe to drink, there is no issues there, they continue to watch the situation very, very closely. And we're working with firefighters, you know, to make sure it's like, where are you? You know, what kind of, you know, are you using retardant, those types of things? So that communication is flowing and we actually have that conversation daily. There are some boil water orders and you do need to check with your water provider. Most of those right now, actually, there's several on the Mount Hood area because as you know, which kind of got lost in all of this, PGE was a great partner and actually took the grid down on Mount Hood. We're grateful that they did so because I think we would have a lot more issues right now if they had not. But there's a lot of water systems up there and they're quite small, but they lost water pressure. So it has nothing to do with the fires, it has to do with bringing that grid back up and making sure that they get the water pressure back. So there's a lot of boil water orders there that, and you really do need to, especially in that area, you need to really find out from your water provider if you're under water boil order. And there's also one in the Colton area. I don't believe it has been lifted, but you please check there with your water provider as well. So, and we're, like I said, we continue to work very closely with our water providers as well as with fire to see if there's any issues, especially with surface water and those who have intakes along the Clackamas and other rivers.
Good, thank you, we need to move on, Gary, what's up next?
Yes, next still on wildfires, we have Stephen Madcor to discuss with you approval of an addendum number one to Resolution 2020-66 declaring a local state of emergency regarding wildfires. Stephen, please go ahead.
Thank you Gary, good morning Commissioners. What we have for your consideration this morning is an addendum number one to the emergency declaration that this, concerning wildfires, that this board declared on September 8th. Currently is set to expire on September 22nd and it is requested that this declaration of emergency with all of its attendant emergency measures be extended until November 10th. And the addendum before you, it would incorporate all of your previously declared emergency measures, including the curfew. And it also has additional language under paragraph number two stating that additional resources are necessary, including but not limited to, for sheltering those individuals displaced by the fire, in addition to those combating the wildfire, the collecting, transporting and disposing of debris created by the wildfire and assistance related to re-entry and resource centers needed for the impacted population. That's just an additional cause for additional resources. So if the board were to approve this, it would extend the currently declared emergency until November 10th, which is the date proposed by Nancy and agreed to by others. And I'm available to answer any questions that the board may have.
Yes, I see Sonya's hand is still up, no? Paul, question?
Yeah, I just, I'm assuming Gary, because of all the state of emergencies that have been declared in FEMA, that there'll be financial relief to fill in a lot of those. So I'm prepared to make the motion. So I so moved to extend the amended emergency declaration.
Second. Second.
It's removed and second to approve the addendum number one to Resolution number 2020-66 declaring a local state of emergency. I would like to come back and review this within that time, which I know we have the ability to do and that is for the curfew. And maybe talk about how it is applied. And then my guess is it's probably going to have to be extended at some point, just from debris management. So what is ahead for this county and for the rest of the state and many cases, Southern California, I mean California and Washington, is a huge task. And that is getting rid of the debris. So Gary?
Yes, to answer Commissioner Savis's question, yes. Part of the reason staff's requesting this extension is so that we will still be eligible for federal and state emergency declaration dollars. And as Chair Bernard just said, the debris cleanup is going to take a long, long time. And we need to have this declaration in place to support that and the supporting federal dollars, thank you.
Paul?
Yeah, I actually have a question for Nancy, but it's not related to the emergency declaration, but it's related to what we just discussed, but I just assume we just take the poll and then I want to ask her a question.
All right, please poll us.
Okay, Commissioner Fisher?
Hi.
Commissioner Humberston?
Is that out of range?
Yeah, we.
Aye.
Perfect.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Bernard?
Aye, motion carries unanimously, go ahead Paul, ask your question.
Yeah, so on this issue of debris, is, have we had any identified sites? And the reason I ask this is I got a number of people that have indicated to me and I checked firsthand, at least as of yesterday, that the DEQ South Station in Oregon City and the one in Portland, I believe, closed to the public due to smoke because of safety of the employees. And I do know that there's people wanting to rid of debris. So is there any, is there a site where we're directing people that have or trying to clean up their properties to direct them to drop that debris?
Not at this time, no, but we do have a team working on that, that it's a process and those sites have to be very carefully vetted and chosen because there's a possibility that we could have debris there for months. So, but I have, we do have a really fabulous team working on that right now and we have our contractor in working with us as well.
Yeah, I would strongly suggest, because I think there's been a concern that there's going to be an overwhelming amount of debris, that people are going to pick up this message, that we at least work with DEQ and Metro and whoever to get that message out as far as getting people to just stand down and do that as organized as a way as possible.
That is part of our plan and that is what we're doing now.
Thank you.
So Clackamas County has a debris management plan that is far beyond fantastic. And we are way ahead of everybody else and that has been said. And so managing the debris, you know, first thing, you probably shouldn't be doing much of that outside. Secondly, insurance, the insurance companies are going to want to see some of this debris before it's removed. And thirdly, you don't know what's in there. There's got to be a lot of hazardous material, plastics and.
Yeah, and that, sorry, that is one of the reasons we have to be very careful because we have hazmat material, we have woody material, we have ash. Debris removal and even damage assessment is complicated at best.
Yes, Martha?
Yeah, I just had a question because I know we're going to be getting federal dollars for emergencies. Do we have anybody that is continuing at all to, since most, a good portion of the actual burn has happened in our rural communities and oftentimes the USDA has dollars. Do we have anybody that understands on our staff how to access those dollars?
We, we have, we have a person in finance that is, that's his expertise, is working through FEMA and some of these other issues, so yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
We also have outside contractors who are doing assessments and all those things too because like Nancy said, we have to have a sort of a guess in by the 22nd.
25th.
25th, so and that is one huge task.
It is.
Especially when we still have areas that are in red.
Right, we can't get into some areas yet.
Yeah, Paul?
Yeah, one other thing I just, I forgot to emphasize and that was, is that number one, they've been closed. There's always a normal flow of vehicles and debris that goes into the, to the transfer stations. A lot of the, I know we already forgot that to some degree, but a lot of the stuff that people have extra needs for right now is the windstorm. Not necessarily fire damage, but debris from the windstorm because they had damage of that. So there's the pent up demand, so I don't want to see the lines going out down the freeway. But it's going to be, when those doors open, it's going to be, it's going to be tough.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you and we're going to move on to the next item, Gary, what is that?
Next is COVID-19 updates. We have Philip Mason Joyner, who is our Public Health Director and Incident Commander for our COVID Emergency Operations Center and Dr. Sarah President, our Clackamas County Health Officer, to give you updates, so please go ahead.
Good morning Commissioners, thanks so much for having us today. Yes, we're here to provide you with an update on our COVID-19 response. And Dr. President, as usual, will share information on the reopening metrics, more details on our case data and answer any questions that you have about viral transmission or clinical guidance. Public health staff, we've been very, very busy this week, as you can imagine, helping to support the fire EOC with public health messaging and guidance related to air quality, safe re-entry for folks back to their homes, including the boil water alert that Nancy mentioned. And for the COVID response, we're really spending a lot of time, we've had some staff turnover with our temporary staff, having new opportunities, bringing on a lot of new staff to get them trained up and prepared for what the next, the next chapter looks like around COVID response and cases and the disease investigation work that we need to do in public health. We did work over the past week, we continue to work with. We did work over the past week, we continue to work with all the cases and all the contacts for folks that had to evacuate either due to the evacuation levels and having to go or that the smoke within their home just created such an unhealthy environment that they needed to be placed somewhere else to quarantine or isolate comfortably while they're not feeling well. So we worked in the past week with over 60 families, having to help them either go into hotels or stay with other family and friends in the region and providing guidance with them for how they can do that in ways that don't prevent spreading, spreading COVID to others that they're in close contact with. I want to thank our logistics teams. They've worked really hard to help with the fire response and also COVID, getting our first responders and our partners what they need for COVID prevention and also the air quality. I'd like to give a special shout out to Oregon State University Extension Office. They helped this week get thousands of PPE supplies to farm workers across the whole county. So major thanks to Oregon State University for their, for their support. Case counts for COVID-19 this week have been less than usual. The air quality, the evacuations have had a significant impact on that. We have 61, 61 new cases since we met with you last week, about a dozen per day, and then sadly, three new deaths. Many of our testing sites have had to close this week, and even our state laboratory closed for a few days because of the smoke creating unsafe working conditions for their staff. We've been in regular communication and working with our public and government affairs staff here at the county, coordinating all this air quality messaging, providing guidance to the public. That, the, the air quality alert, it's still in effect right now. We are hopeful that, that we'll see some gradual, slow improvement, it sounds like, with the air quality. And, you know, as a result of all these things, I would say our metrics related to COVID-19, they look pretty good, but we're not really, we don't have good situational awareness or clarity on what the metrics are going to look like from the impacts of everything that we're experiencing right now and what these metrics could look like in the next several weeks. Finally, I did want to share that we continue to meet with the state, with the governor's office, and with the Oregon Health Authority on looking at the baseline requirements for reopening, looking at phase one and phase two, talking about, you know, what science, science-driven changes can be made to help the community around reopening and different businesses. It was helpful right before the fires that they did open up playgrounds and pools. Now, now we are certainly not recommending those activities, but it has been helpful to see the state be a little bit more flexible and, and working with us to try to really evaluate what can be open, what can't can be. We're talking about fall activities, and as we get through this air quality and these wildfires, what are the opportunities? I think for, for public health, for Dr. Prent and I, we're really concerned about large gathering. Phase two, they're pretty high right now with what's allowed. The impacts that that could have on community spread. And really, the need to support our schools with, with being able to open up again for reopening instruction, all of those. All those things are still, still items that are top of the list for discussion and being examined with partners. That is most of my report. Dr. Prent, do you have anything additional you want to share or dive into the metrics?
I think we can go ahead and dive into the metrics and kind of some, some data updates unless there are other questions at this point.
The only thing about bringing up the metrics, I did want to mention too, the environmental health is very heavily working with air quality as well as the water issues. So there's also a lot of crossover between COVID and our wildland fire issues. And I just want to, want everyone to appreciate what environmental health is doing too.
And finally, with the evacuations, I apologize if Philip just mentioned this, but our teams did reach out to every COVID case and contact in the Zone 3 evacuation area to help ensure safe, safe evacuation sites for them where there was not significant increased exposure. We know that there will be some mixing. We know that there are some long-term care facilities that evacuated and found positive cases afterwards. So there will, I think that's my biggest concern as far as the evacuations is our long-term care facility residents who had not yet received results when they were evacuated to other facilities. So we will, the, the nice thing though is that our long-term care facility testing plans and outbreak coordination has really gotten very practiced in it over the last few months. And I think that everybody's really on board with catching those cases early and isolating and, and preventing spread amongst that higher-risk, vulnerable population as much as possible. No, thank you. With that, we will look at the updated public health indicators for phase two requirements. You can see Oregon statewide is meeting only two of these indicators. The tri-county region, Clackamas, Multnomah, and Washington is meeting three of the six. We're not meeting three of the six. And then you can see Clackamas specifically. We are meeting the metrics as far as our emergency room visits, the rate of new cases and rate of hospitalizations, as well as the follow-up within 24 hours. The, the rate of sporadic cases is pretty steady, but there actually appears to be a bit of a downtrend from previously. So the sporadic cases are the ones that we cannot trace to a known source. The goal for phase two reopening is for that to be 30 or under, and we are in the 30s. So I also find that to be reassuring. Again, not sure what's going to occur in the next few weeks. And then our percent positivity uptrend is consistent with an uptrend statewide. There are, this indicator really looks at testing capacity. And so this suggests that we are, we want to try to increase our testing. That has certainly been complicated by the wildfires and, and access to testing. However, that one is one of the metrics that affects our school, school reopening to in-person learning as well. So with that, we can go over to my, well, actually, let's scroll down and look at Multnomah and Washington Counties individually as well. And then I'll take questions, and then we'll, we'll look at some of the school reopening metrics after this. So lower side of the page, Multnomah County, again, they have an uptrend in their percent positivity as well. Percent positive, or the sporadic cases over 30%. I don't think that they've had a significant change either, and they continue to not meet the metric of follow-up in 24 hours. And I, I wish that I could explain that one a little bit more, but I don't have the details on that. And then Washington County also are meeting three of the metrics, uptrend and percent positivity, and an uptrend in COVID-related hospitalizations. However, our hospital capacity, despite our increased emergency room visits for asthma-related and smoke-related issues, our hospital capacity is, is still adequate. So any questions on these before we move on? Thanks.
I don't see any.
Okay. Christina, if you could pull up my PowerPoint, and I'm going to go through it really quickly. I know, I know that everybody is, is tired of COVID. We're tired of having two emergencies, but the reality is that it is still here. I will go through it quickly and touch on some of the school reopenings. I'm happy to go back to any of the slides if you want me to go into any more details. But I know that there's a large agenda that you guys have. So this is the webpage for the school opening to in-person learning metrics that Oregon Department of Education puts out. It looks quite complicated. However, it, I, I'm going to just walk through it a little bit for you. This is the web, is the site for Clackamas County in particular. Any area that has an X in it needs to have a green checkmark in it for us to have comprehensive, or excuse me, for us to have in-person learning. So a couple of, of positive things or trends in the right direction. If you look over on the left-hand side of the screen, the case rate per 100,000, and this data was pulled on September 14th. You can see the last two weeks up to September, the week of September 6th, we have been under 30 per 100,000 as our case rate. I anticipate next week's will show that we have been three weeks under 30 per 100,000 for our case rate. That is a metric that needs to be met for limited in-person learning for K through three. However, they need to go back to comprehensive distance learning if we get up above that 30 again. I've spoken to our schools, and I wouldn't be surprised if there was a bit of a bump. So I, I would recommend waiting just a bit longer to make sure that that's a clear trend so that they don't start for one week and then have to go back down. The other concern is that the percent positivity statewide has gotten above 5%. And my understanding is that we now need to restart the clock, and that needs to be three weeks of that. If you go on to the next slide, please. I'm happy to talk in more detail about all of the reopening metrics because they can be quite confusing. I think I'm going to skip through a lot of it due to our time today. But again, the, for the larger counties, you see that our statewide test positivity must be less than or equal to 5% in this, in this preceding seven days for the past three weeks. So I think that we are resetting the clock there, the statewide metric, even though the Clackamas specific metrics are good. Next slide, please. This is just another look at our, at our data over time. Case rate and percent positivity. Next slide, please. Here is our most recent daily case count, as well as our case counts per day over the entire, well, since June 1st. As Philip mentioned, with many test sites being closed, there was also a decrease in reporting over the last few days. We've had a big influx of cases today now that the state lab is back up and running. So not sure what the daily case count is going to look like next week. But we have been holding steady at 15 to 20-ish, so under 20. It's good. And next slide. And then this is a breakdown of our outbreaks by type. We still have, most of our outbreaks are in workplaces, but no significant changes the last several weeks. Next slide, please. I think that may be it. Okay, I'm happy to take questions. Thank you for your patience with, with all of the data.
Sonia?
Hey, Dr. President, I'm confused on the very first slide where Clackamas County is, I don't know if we can pull that up. Where Clackamas County has its numbers, it all has the red checkmarks by it, but it looks like we are below 30 per 100,000 for two, for August 30th and September 6th. So I'm confused as to why there's a red X by those numbers.
Yeah, this number is, so to have in-person learning for all grades, it needs to be at 10 per 100,000 or less. And so that checkmark is going to be red until we get to the 10. We don't have, we don't have a checkmark for the 30 per 100,000, but I do want to point out that that's, you know, the, probably the first step for many schools.
Thank you.
Well, I don't see any other questions. Gary, did you have anything else?
No, I don't. So we'll move on then. Thank you, Philip, Sarah, and Nancy.
I'd just like to add something last night. Last night, the tri-chairs did meet our health, our, Philip was there, and Dr. Sarah Prent was there. We discussed how the three of us could, sorry, my camera's a little low there, discussed how the three of us could work towards moving to phase two. But right now, none of us have been able to be successful on the six metrics. So we're a ways out. The other concern is to testing laboratories. The testing sites have been closed. And so we're going to have a backlog of tests that we're going to have to deal with. And then the fact that we've had a lot of people having to leave their homes and go somewhere else. And that might be with family members, that might be in a tent or a trailer in a parking lot. And that, the impact of that could be two to three weeks out. But I would say that generally, we have a, a goal of, of moving to phase two at some point. The challenge is if we get any more of these things, I, I, it's going to be very, it's going to be a while unless we can get those metrics down. So we're working hard. We are talking about how we can move to phase two. And then I'd also just like to thank Dennis from Clackamas Town Center called me. Nordstrom's is, is now using their site as a distribution center for supply. So I want to thank Nordstrom's for what they're doing. And we're going to meet again in about two weeks, I think, the health officials and the tri-chairs and continue towards achieving, moving from one phase to the other. One thing is perhaps the governor, we're very much dependent on what the governor determines to be the metrics because phase one is not exactly like phase was, one was in the beginning. It's something different. So is there something in between? Well, we also don't want to put business up against business. You know, one business can open, another can't. But we are really working hard, and I don't know if you guys have seen notes yet, working hard to come to some resolution as soon as we possibly can. So I want to thank you both for attending last night. Thank you. Gary?
All right, we're, we'll move on then to the Housing Authority-
Gary, sorry, I had a couple of questions. Had my hand raised. One thing that I just wanted to ask Jim, since you brought up moving to phase two, are we looking scientifically at what an increase in cases will be when we move into phase two and how that compromises schools?
So none of this is going to happen without scientific evidence that it's safe to do so. I would say that, I know that Dr. Prent, and there was some discussion about moving into schools, the impact scientifically and number of cases. We certainly don't want to do what others have done, and that is open and have to close a week later. So I know that, as, as you saw, Dr. Prent had the, the sheet up there about schools. And we're really focusing on the science that would allow us to move forward with the schools. Correct, Dr. Prent? Okay. You had another question, Sonia?
Another question. I know that some jurisdictions are looking at wastewater as a way to determine how much their community spread is. Are we doing that at all in Clackamas County?
It's a pilot project, isn't it?
Philip, do you want to speak to that?
Sure, we have, we're working with Oregon State University and our West Water Environmental Services, and we are doing a pilot on that very topic in Clackamas County, yeah.
Great. Are, are you done, Sonia?
Yeah, I'm just, yes, I just really want to, because I'm not in those meetings, Jim, when you're having those conversations. And understanding the trade-off, we just need to best predict when we go to phase two, this is what the possible trade-off might be to make that decision. And we don't have crystal balls. All we have are models and forecasting and best predictions that look, seeing at that carefully. And I'm not saying that we don't do it. I'm just saying that we need to look at it carefully.
I just want to assure you that I do have a crystal ball. It's just a little smoky right now. I do actually have a crystal ball. All right. So thank you, and Gary. Thank you, Dr. Prent, Nancy, and Philip.
All right, we'll move on to the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
With this, the board will now adjourn as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Housing Authority Board for the next item. And with that, I'd like to introduce our Housing Authority Commissioner, Anne Lindstra. Thank you, Anne, for joining us. I see you're coming from Hawaii.
Oh, yeah.
All right, Gary?
Go ahead, Christina.
The Housing Authority Consent Agenda, number one, approval to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the Housing Authority of Clackamas County and Community Development for Environmental Reviews. And number two, in the matter of writing off uncollectible accounts for the first quarter of fiscal year 2021.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion, Anne.
I move, we accept the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? With that, Christina, please poll us.
All right, Commissioner Lindstra?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humbirdston?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
I got it.
I think I heard Commissioner Savis say aye as well.
Yes, aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Bernard?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, and thank you, Anne, for your time. Don't do too much surfing.
No, no, it's too smoky here. Thank you.
Thank you, and announce that we are adjourning as the Housing Authority Board, and we convene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. And Gary, what is up next?
Next, Commissioners, is a presentation regarding hunger in our community and announcing the results of the 2020 Health, Housing and Human Services Food Drive. We have Rich Swift, the Director of Health, Housing and Human Services, to present.
Good morning, Chair and the Board, and good morning, Gary and Stephen. So it's been, and Christina, thank you. It's been a bit surreal, surreal, to be honest, regarding the food drive this year. We've had to pivot and you know, we get really creative in terms of how we've done things. And essentially it was a focus on a basket raffle and a bake sale. And also the Housing Authority did a few things. So essentially, you know, this is a partnership between, and it really, actually, this is not just H3S, this is also larger parts of the county. And so I would actually term this as something the county has done in relationship with the Oregon Food Bank. This isn't just H3S, you know, this involves the board, this involves county administration, this involves libraries, this involves HR, county finance. And that's spelled out in the document that we submitted to the board. So really what you see from the Oregon Food Bank and some of the things and with healthcare systems, and they have actually been primarily responsible for making sure that a large bulk of our population in the state, 1.6 million people are, in terms of their clinical visits, assessed for hunger. Because hunger continues to be an issue in the state. You know, and also another thing they have done, which is a huge benefit for us, is quadrupling the number of school pantries to forty, meaning that seventy-two thousand households are provided the food they need to essentially subsidize and hopefully bring up their access to nutrition because without this, they would be going hungry. So this year, we've collected $7,299 for the Oregon Food Bank, which is equivalent to almost 30,000 pounds of food. I would actually like to especially thank Marco Inciso, who has been a primary organizer with this and working across the county. You know, it was his efforts that actually helped us structure this. We'd been hoping that we'd be able to do the dunk tank, but this year just proved not possible. But, and then also I'd like to thank Jean Weber, you know, she single-handedly did the bake sale. We are talking tirelessly baking and doing stitching and other work. And she generated, you know, in her efforts, almost $2,200. So after work, you know, she would go to her home and essentially operate, which I've never seen it, but I have to imagine it looks almost like an industrial kitchen in terms of what she turned out in baked goods this year. So again, thanks to the board, our participation with the Oregon Food Bank, Glassstone and Oakloge Libraries, the volunteer connections within our own operations, Bound to Happen, County Finance, Library Services, again, Public Health, the Treasurer, HR, and some others who were anonymous donors for our baskets. So on behalf of my department, but also on behalf of the county, I want to thank the staff who participated. I want to thank the board's acknowledgement and receipt of this information in regards to hunger because it's quite important. So I'll stop there and open up questions or anything the board would like to add to this.
I don't see any questions, but I just want to thank everyone who participated in this. Sorry, I missed the bake sale and stuff. Not that I need anything, but I appreciate the work you guys have done. Every year is a success, and certainly there's a lot of need out there. And Clackamas County employees have done outstanding job helping provide food services to those folks who just don't have the means to get the kind of food that they need. And the schools, what they have done really is pretty incredible. So, thank you. All right, I don't see any additional comments, and we'll move on to the next item. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Next, Commissioners, a public hearing, first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 6.05, Noise Control of the Clackamas County Code. We have Nate Boderman from the County Council's Office to present.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Gary. Pleasure to be with you here today. What's up for discussion and consideration today is really the next step in what's been an ongoing process to make a number of changes to the county's noise ordinance. As you may recall, we've had three policy sessions on this to date. And while these previous sessions have really involved wide-ranging discussions around a number of issues pertaining to noise control, regulation in the county, the one constant has really been a desire by the board to see the county implement a more flexible and subjective standard for determining noise violations and move away from the use of noise meters and any objective measurement of noise for the purpose of determining violations. So with that as a little bit of background, I'll note that the most significant change proposed in the ordinance before you today implements that change from our current standards, which again, set minimum decibel thresholds in which must be verified with properly calibrated noise meters, for instance. And a change to a standard which really relies on more subjective measurements, such as whether noise is unreasonably loud or plainly audible, for instance. So not to oversimplify things, but at the end of the day, under the new regulations, if they're passed, noise that is unreasonably loud would be a violation of the updated noise ordinance. To provide some context for what would be considered to be unreasonably loud noise, recognizing that that is a subjective standard, we did provide some examples in the ordinance of noise that would be considered to be a per se violation. I'll note that we propose to keep the maximum decibel thresholds as a violation and some of the other noise violations from the existing ordinance. Because the idea here was not to change the types of noise that would be a violation under the noise ordinance, but rather to simply adjust the way that our deputies could enforce the rules in instances where there was offending noise present. So in other words, a violation of the noise ordinance today should continue to be a violation of the noise ordinance moving forward. Really what this ordinance does is just to change the way that the violations are substantiated. In addition to retaining and further defining categories of per se noise violations, the updated noise ordinance would retain exemptions that are currently in our existing ordinance for certain noise. But we're also proposing to add three additional categories to those exemptions. The additional categories relate to public construction projects, events like shows or sporting events or gatherings that operate under an approved permit and specific allowance for fireworks around the holidays. Some things that were not currently captured in our existing noise ordinance. We've incorporated additional changes into the ordinance as well. Notably, the fines associated with noise violations, we propose to clarify those. So moving forward, the specific fine schedule would progress as follows. Hundred and fifty dollars for an individual's first offense, three hundred dollars for a second offense, and five hundred dollars for a third offense and every offense thereafter. Finally, staff is proposing various housekeeping changes to the ordinance, mostly to clean up some existing inconsistencies that we identified in the ordinance. I'll note that throughout the process, there's been unanimous support for the changes proposed as part of the ordinance before you today. But I'll also note that during our previous sessions, another issue emerged which involved potential changes to the noise variance procedures, specifically increasing the internal and external public notice associated with those variances that are approved. As far as the variances go, variance process is available for noises that would otherwise violate our ordinance. Most of the discussion around variances that we engaged in previously was around the fact that there was no notice required under the code currently, either internally or externally when these variances were approved. At the last policy session, the board agreed to table this particular issue, recognizing there was still some work to do on it and to move forward with the remaining changes, which is what we're doing here today. I just wanted to reiterate here that we will be coming back to you at a later session to specifically discuss issues around noise variances only. And we do have a meeting scheduled with Administrator Schmidt and various departments to come up with a proposal for your review. So we should be bringing that back to you in short order. So with that, I'll conclude by saying it's certainly staff's recommendation that you have the first reading of the ordinance today and hold the public hearing and that you would move this forward to a second reading here in a couple of weeks. With that, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do any Commissioners have any clarifying questions? And I see Paul?
Yeah, Nate, just one question. Do we have to go through this hearing exercise to reevaluate or look at the fine or fee schedule?
What we're doing is we're adding it as part of this ordinance. And so typically, we will we'll take any changes to fines and fees and do those once a year because we're statutorily statutorily limited in how many times we can adjust those throughout the course of the year. This is a unique circumstance because currently we have authorization for fines up to $500 for noise ordinances, and so we're really clarifying what's already permitted in the code. The difficulty here is that we have multiple noise ordinance violations or fines for noise ordinance violations, depending on if they happen inside of a county park or outside of a county park. So there was some confusion, I think, between which fine applied. We're thinking this clarification of the fine schedule will help address that.
Yeah, my concern is that some people might view those fines as not that much of an obstacle and might just choose to violate them in light or in just basically circumvent a variance process or any other process. It's my concern.
All right, Ken, did you have a question?
I just to comment, Mr. Chairman, just wanted to tell staff I appreciate the work that they've had to do on this issue. Much of this came from citizens who were concerned about noise and whatnot like that, and the responsiveness by staff is appreciated. I know there is no motion on the floor, but I'm gonna go into an area where I'm very likely to lose connection. So I would like the record to reflect that I vote aye in support if you, if I lose you. And I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you. And with that, I don't see any other questions. We'll open the public hearing, and Christina Twiliger will moderate this portion. Christina?
Thank you, Chair Bernard. I'll be coordinating public comment for the specific public hearing and later for general comment. If any attendees would like to provide comment on this specific public hearing, you can do so now by utilizing the raise hand feature on Zoom. And if you're on the phone, you can hit star nine. Again, we'll open the public comment to any topic related to county business in a little while, but if you have a comment related to this matter, please select the raise hand button on your Zoom bar. I am not seeing any, and I do not have any emails regarding this matter.
Yeah, it looks like most of the attendees are staff and perhaps newspapers. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
I move, we read the ordinance by title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we read the ordinance by title only. And please, Christina, please call us.
Yes. Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humbirdston?
If you get this, aye.
Okay. Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Bernard?
Aye. Ask the clerk to assign a number and read the ordinance by title only.
Okay, ordinance number zero eight dash two zero two zero. An ordinance amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 6.05, Noise Control. Amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 2.07, Compliance Hearings Officer. And amending Clackamas Code, Clackamas County Code, excuse me, Appendix B fines.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Any proposed changes or amendments? I'll ask, so I will announce that the second reading will be Thursday, October 1st, 2020, at the Board's Regular Annual Business Meeting. And with that, we'll move on to the next item.
Great, thank you, Nate. Next is the Consent Agenda, Chair.
Ask the clerk to read the Consent Agenda.
All right, the Consent Agenda for today, Health, Housing and Human Services. Approval of a subrecipient agreement with Northwest Housing Alternatives and the Community Development Division for ESG Funding for the Annie Ross House Community Development. Number two, approval of Amendment Number Two, the Two Agency Services Contract with Central City Concern for Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program. For Department of Transportation and Development, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Metro and Clackamas County for work on the Ritchie Road, North Fork, Deep Creek, Culvert. For Technology Services, approval for the service level agreement between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and Malala Communications for Dark Fiber Connection. And for Water Environmental Services, approval of the purchase and sale agreement and related documents between Clackamas Water Environment Services and SDG dash two LLC, related to the transfer of the former Blue Heron Lagoon property.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Do any Commissioners want to remove an item from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Paul, you're on mute.
I move, we approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? Christina, please poll us.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humbirdston?
He just went to mute.
We'll come back. Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Humbirdston, that's an aye. Commissioner Schrader?
Yes, it is.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Bernard?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is Gary?
Public Communication and Christina Twiliger will moderate this portion.
Thank you. Now it's time for the general comment related to any county business. If you have a comment related to county business, you can use the raise hand feature on Zoom. Or if you're calling in by phone and want to give a comment, please hit star nine now. We'll give a We'll give our listeners a moment. I do not have any emails today from the B C C at clackamas.us. And I'm not seeing any hands raised.
All right, well, we'll close the public portion of this meeting and ask go to the next item, which is the county administrator updates.
Yes, thank you, Chair. First, Christina, can you bring Jennifer Hughes into the room? Commissioners, we're going to continue the conversation from your issue session this Tuesday regarding a draft comment letter on House Bill two zero zero one about a rulemaking proposal. So we have made edits as you requested and would like your permission to approve that letter. You were emailed that draft at some point yesterday, I think. So Jennifer, would you please give overall updates of what was changed and then commissioners seeking your approval?
Yes. To reflect your discussion and issues the other day, we added some additional language regarding the insufficient infrastructure or insufficient urban services question. So you had talked about parks, you had talked about sort of complete streets with continuous sidewalks and two-way traffic and room for on-street parking. So we added all of that and we made the language stronger regarding the proposed parking regulations so that we expressed your opinion that we would like to be able to require more onsite parking than what the rules currently would permit. So those changes are found in the parking section and the sufficient urban services section of the letter.
Okay, has everybody had a chance to review that? If we're good with it, I'd entertain a motion.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we accept the letter as written. Any further discussion? Boy, that was almost too easy. All right, so let's, Christina, please call us.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humbertson?
We go back to him.
Okay, Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Bernard?
Aye. Motion carries. We weren't able to get a hold of Ken, so four, zero. With that, we'll move on to...
Not done yet, Chair, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Jennifer, very much. Thank you, Jennifer. The rest of my regular update to you, commissioners. As you know, there's a lot of people, a lot of organizations that have done phenomenal work during our wildfire emergency who have volunteered their time and resources and money to support our community. We're going to do a big thank you when this is all over, but a few we'd like to thank right now for their phenomenal work for our community. And, and you already recognize these groups as well, Clackamas Community College, who have supported our fire camp for our, our first responders and firefighters. The Clackamas Town Center that provided a staging area for those that needed to find a temporary place to stay. The Milwaukee Portland Elks that voluntarily, without anyone asking, set up their own staging area and opened their doors for restrooms and, and food at no cost for anyone that needed somewhere to stay. Val Hoyle, the Oregon Commissioner of Labor and Industries, volunteered to help in our Emergency Operations Center, and she did so earlier this week. And this one, Riva Feldman is the city manager of Malibu, California. She knows Sherilyn Lombos, who is the city manager of Twallerton. And Sherilyn connected Riva with me, and Riva voluntarily offered to help us here at Clackamas County because she read about us in the news. And Riva, as a city manager in Malibu, has had experience dealing with wildfires in urban areas. So Riva, on her own initiative, has been supporting our Emergency Operations Center from Malibu, California. Phenomenal. So we'll thank all these people later, but just a few examples of the amazing service being provided by our community to help others in our community. Here at the county, I want to thank Public and Government Affairs for their phenomenal work in helping spread communication to our community as well. In particular, our county website. So normally, our county website gets twelve thousand views a day. Last Thursday, our county website had one point three million views on Thursday alone. And in addition, our evacuation map on the county website last Thursday had two point seven million views. That is phenomenal. So in perspective, our county website on average has four point five million views all year. And in a single day, we had all over half of that. Our wildfire webpage alone has had two point five million views in the past week. So people are paying attention and using the web as a communication tool. So I really want to thank Public and Government Affairs for their quick and efficient service in getting this news out to our community. And finally, of course, I want to thank all of our staff who have been working very diligently through a COVID pandemic, through the wildfire issue. And in particular, our staff working in the Emergency Operations Center. So these staff, they're still working their regular jobs, commissioners, and they're supporting the Emergency Operations Center. In many cases, working twelve, fourteen-hour shifts, sometimes nonstop for days on end. And many of our, some of our employees in the Emergency Operations Center have had to be evacuated from their own homes. And I'm, I'm very sad to say, some have even lost their homes. And they are still in the Emergency Operations Center. They have taken no time off. I'm very, very proud and honored to work with all of our staff and especially those who are working in our Emergency Operations Center. Thank you so much. That is my report, Chair.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to County Commissioner Communications, and Sonya, you're up first.
Thank you, Chair Bernard. I've had the honor and privilege of connecting with many constituents, as I'm sure we all have. And I continue to do so here for everyone to offer support and to verify information and to connect to our emergency operations for resources. It's, I think I can speak for all of us when I say it's quite an honor and a privilege to be in the position that we are as the ombudsman for Clackamas County during this incredible time. So that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be brief. You and I both were able to go to the fire camp at the college and have also had the opportunity to go to the Elks Club. And, and I just want to say thank you to the citizens of Clackamas County who by the thousands have offered up food and, and shelter and their assistance and their dollars to help those that have been evacuated. So thank you to the citizens of Clackamas County.
Thank you, Ken. Drive safe. Martha?
Here we go. I just got off mute. Well, I'd like to thank a, a number of folks too. And first and foremost, I do want to thank our sheriff's office as well as our firefighters. They have been working under extreme duress. And I had an opportunity to talk to Sheriff Roberts this morning and, and I think very highly of him in many ways. I've worked with him for many years. And what has been mentioned is that the federal folks have said that they have never seen such a level of cooperation and coordination with local officials, whether it be fire or sheriff, public safety. And it wouldn't surprise me at all if they didn't look at our frameworks as a national model of how local governments work with all of their entities and agencies and people who are really laying their lives on the line, if you want to know it. It's scary, you know? But I think that is a tremendous compliment, and I think that we, we need to acknowledge that part of it. The other thing I've been thinking about a lot is there's a, there's a quote that's attributed to Winston Churchill. And it's, it's, if you're going through hell, keep going. That's kind of where we are with this, in my humble opinion. Whereas our urban areas are experiencing such a terrible air quality. You know, we're looking at urban services in terms of water quality, all those kinds of things. Let's, let's not forget that our rural areas have experienced that the ash that is falling on us here in West Lynn, Lake Oswego, Milwaukee, Portland, is the ash generated by all those fires around Estacada, Malala, Colton. I personally, I mean, I got to tell you, I was worried sick about our farm. My son still works there and grows hops. And we were lucky. Our farm didn't burn to the ground. But I do think that we need to acknowledge how much suffering is going on out there in our rural areas in a significant way. And that we need to be pivoting our focus not only on urban issues, but redirecting our focus to what the recovery is going to look like in severely stressed rural areas. They're suffering a lot there. I'm, I'm hearing things that people are feeling isolated. They're feeling frightened. I think that's some of the things that fuels rumors that get started. You know, because in the end, various organizations, I don't care what their alphabet soup are, people are behaving badly out there because it's such a crisis. Then we need to take care of that with our law enforcement and our firefighters. So I'm hopefully that we can really make sure, for example, that we access USDA dollars and through FEMA dollars. And Nancy Bush today, who I think is one of the most wonderful human beings I've had a chance to work with, well, next to Gary, there you go, next to you, Gary.
And Stephen.
Has done, and Stephen, Stephen, you're there too, has done a phenomenal job supporting us through this crisis. So we are going through hell right now, and the only choice we have is to keep going. And I believe that we are resilient. And there is a level of toughness out in our, our rural areas that we need to honor and that we do, need to acknowledge in a really, really big way. The other shout out I'd like to give is to Water and Environment Services. Greg Geist, if you looked at our email today, wrote the most wonderful email dealing with how his staff, because of water and those sewer and all the things that they need to keep going, have they have risen to the occasion in a big way? So we're only as good as the people we work with. And so it's really the people we work with and the people, and it gets bumpy. Oh, well, it always does. So what? You know, just keep going and we're all going to get through this together. And I will tell you, in the end, I don't think that we need to anticipate an asteroid hitting us anytime soon. Okay, I think that, I think that, that catastrophe, I don't think is in our, hopefully in the, in the near future. So stay well, stay healthy, and just keep moving. Thanks.
Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, well, things have moved pretty briskly in the last seven or eight days. And I think it was just about eight days ago, seven and a half days ago, where our fire chief, prior to getting state and federal assistance, was saying that he had asked for help and wasn't able to get any while our forest, our rural areas were burning. And that didn't really give us a lot of confidence that we were well-prepared. And of course, the whole state, the number, most of the state was under similar circumstances, Marion County, Jackson County, and others. So unfortunately, there's been a loss of life. Several properties have been burned to the ground and so on. But seven days ago, you know, we, we got that help, that those declarations took place. We imposed a curfew, and I just wanted to briefly speak about that. The curfew, with the way we crafted it, was really at the discretion of law enforcement. So I would, for those in the urban areas as of today, should not really be alarmed. It's really a tool for the sheriffs to implement and, and the local police to implement as needed. And that's going to be focused. I think they have pretty much, too much on their plate right now to be just pulling people over for the sake of it. So I would, I would look at it as positively as possible. And really, the goal is to get in front of any looting, and that was the primary purpose of that. There is probably nothing more unsettling to think that you, you've left your home in an emergency. You left a lot of your, your important possessions. And, you know, you're worried about a fire, but to have that concern of your property being looted is just an extra stress, stressor that is just unnecessary. So I want to just say that I, I really believe our sheriff's deputies out there are acting with the best of intentions in protecting property, and my hat goes off to all of them for the good work that they're doing in helping protect our property, the extra hours everyone put in. That goes for the fire personnel, our staff, our E O C staff across the board. The state, the, the state folks from forestry, the firefighters that came in from other states. Just the overwhelming outpouring of help. And especially the, the local fabric of the rural communities, neighbors sticking together and working together side by side to protect each other's property unselfishly. So I mean, this is, this is something that we'll never forget. It's, it's a piece of our history. It's a sad part of our history, but I think that there's a lot of great stories are going to come out of this and obviously some sad ones as well. Yeah, I, I have been just overwhelmed with, with, with all of that, and I appreciate all the input. And again, the cooperation everyone's provided. And we'll get through this. We're going to get it, get it through this. I was thinking about the typical, you know, end of the year, everyone has a New Year's Eve party. I think we ought to just say, maybe change it to a farewell twenty twenty party or good riddance twenty twenty. It's been a tough year. So let's just hope that there's brighter days ahead, that Commissioner Schrader's asteroid doesn't hit tomorrow. And we'll all be good. So with that, I wish everyone a safe and, and healthy weekend, and hopefully things will calm down. Be, again, take all those safety precautions, those out in the rural areas. We're worried about trees and slides. Please take all those precautions and, and if we can be of any help, reach out to us. We'll make sure we fill any gaps or needs. My heart goes out, my prayers go out to all of you. Thank you.
So Paul, does that mean the asteroid's called the Schrader asteroid? I hope not.
So first, I got to say that I, I had an opportunity to visit fire camp with Ken. And one of the command personnel said something, he said that what brings tears to his eyes are first, the loss that a lot of people have experienced. And secondly, that so many people stepped up to help. And he's very proud of Clackamas County. Also talked about the federal folks, how they said when they got here, they thought this is going to be a big cluster. I won't use the second word. But they found out entirely different, that Clackamas County and our partners around the region, how we're extremely well organized. It didn't take that long to get help from the federal government. Matter of fact, they were here pretty quick. And actually, after we agreed to turn over this to the state of Oregon, the federal people asked, the gentleman walked out the door. He was on the phone and resources were on their way, literally. But one of the things that's important is that there is a process to this. I mean, I've signed numerous documents, and I've signed in some more, which will shift the responsibility to another group, from another group to another group. So it's been a process. But the Attorney General determined that that must, there must be a process. So we knew who command and control was. Also want to thank Mayor of Estacada, Sean Drinkwine. I, he really stepped up. Took neighbors and folks who needed help under his wings and actually went, took a large group out to Twallerton. I, I mean, Tropdale. Tremendous work under extreme times. I got a text message one morning, please help Estacada. We're on fire. So I'm very proud of that. I want to, you know, the next step is recovery. That is actually where we are in many ways, moving to the recovery stage. We are very lucky to have the people we have in disaster management, Nancy Bush and all those other people. And their coronation has done an outstanding job. Like I said earlier, we have an extraordinary plan for recovery. And, and, and many, many folks don't have anything. And, and many, many folks don't have anything. So we, we are working well. Of course, the fire departments around the region have just gone above and beyond the call of duty as has have Gary, Stephen, and all those other folks out there who have really stepped up to work together and put this behind us. And Paul, 2020 has really sucked. And I'm not afraid to say that. I've seen the 2020 in various versions, and the zero was not a positive one. I'm a little bit tired of winning in 2020. But let's put those fires behind us and get COVID-19 under control. And hopefully, 2021 will be a hell of a lot better. And with that, thank you all very much for what you've done, including Nancy Bush's cat. You've made, working here with you, a very positive experience. I said to Gary one day, I've, this is my 20th year in politics. I have studied 20 years to get to this point. And I think that education has made this process the best it could be. Thank you, we are adjourned.